Hi.
Here, yeah. Anna May O'Shea-Brook.
Here.
Hi.
And Leo Brem is here. We're going to be entering into executive session to discuss issues related to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. In this case, Medfield Teachers Association's Unit A, B, and C, the AFL-CIO cafeteria workers and secretaries. And with that.
We will reconvene.
We will reconvene at seven o'clock. And we will see you then.
All right.
Right?
Did. Well done, Leo.
All right. A lot of pressure.
Great for Jeff. Oh, there he is.
Oh, yeah, we got Jeff. Yeah, she really is having trouble getting into this meeting. I have to call this meeting to order. I'll start with a roll call vote. Megan Glenn.
Hi, here.
Anna May O'Shea-Brook.
Here.
Leo Brem, here. All right. We were just in executive session to discuss issues related to collective bargaining or litigation if any, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation, litigating position of the public body. In this case, the Medfield Teachers Association Units A, B, and C, the AFL-CIO cafeteria workers and secretaries. All right, let's hit this agenda. We've got some cool stuff to talk about tonight. So, approval of minutes. Did everyone have a chance to review the minutes for regular meeting minutes dated 4/15/21?
I did.
Do I hear a motion to approve these minutes? Megan Glenn moves. Do I have a second?
Second, Anna May.
Second by Anna May. Roll call vote. Megan Glenn.
Hi.
Anna May O'Shea-Brook.
Hi.
And Leo Brem, hi. All right, executive session minutes for the date of 4/15/21. Have a motion to approve.
Sorry, are we holding those by any chance?
Were we holding those?
Yeah, those are being retained.
Oh, sorry. Oh, that's right, because of the bargain of mine. Those are being retained. And our workshop minutes from April 16?
They're approved and retained.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. So do I have a motion to approve and retain the executive session minutes from 4/15/21?
So moved.
Megan Glenn moves. Do I have a second?
Anna May.
Anna May O'Shea-Brook, second. Megan Glenn.
Hi.
Anna May O'Shea-Brook.
Hi.
Leo Brem, hi. Workshop minutes. These, I think this recording was already posted too, so I think this is good. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'm going to give that one to Anna May O'Shea. Second by Megan Glenn. Anna May O'Shea-Brook.
Hi.
Megan Glenn.
Hi.
Leo Brem, hi. Okay. That was a lot of business right there, getting it down to business.
We want to go back to public input before we go.
Since I skipped, since I skipped right over it? Yeah, I can definitely. Absolutely. At this moment, we're open to flow of public input. We will hear comments on anything preferably that's not on the agenda, as we will provide opportunity for comments at that point in the agenda for those items. So with that, you just need to raise your hand and then let us know your name and address, and we will bring you over for a comment. I have Kristin Martin, and I'm going to promote Kristin to panelist.
Great. Thank you, Leo. I'm so sorry. And hi, I am here legally right now. Hi, Kristin.
2:59, that two minutes, 59 second mark, we were on it.
I am so glad, because I do not want to repeat last week. Thank you, Kristin.
Hi, Kristin. Hi, so Kristin Martin, 91 Green Street. My comment is about notifications for positive cases in the schools. I have kids at Memorial. I know that there have been a couple of positive cases from staff that the public has not been notified about, so I didn't know if there was a change in protocol for that. That was my comment. So other than that, thank you.
Dr. Morrison, do you do you want to speak to that ordinarily? We wouldn't, but I think it's, it's okay.
So we have been getting it out the day of. We're just a little behind here today, yesterday and today, but it is going out tomorrow morning. We started to accumulate a couple of, if we started to get a couple of positives, we would accumulate them and send it out to reduce number of emails, but that is correct. There is a positive at Memorial that we are, we'll send it out tomorrow. I mean, I guess the important thing to understand is that people that are directly impacted are notified right away. So I mean, if you are potential close contact or your child is a potential close contact, they are notified right away. So that is not an issue at all.
Because I know, sorry, just a couple of weeks ago, or maybe a month or so ago now, there was a positive case of a staff member that nobody was notified above, unless you were in that classroom. So that was kind of where that stemmed from.
I have to go back on that. I've sent 84 notifications. So I'd have to go back and check, Kristin. I don't know. I'm not sure about that. But we've, and I would add, I just would add one other thing, too, is that if, again, we don't do the comparison game, but I will this time. Many other districts do not even mention the school that the positives came from during this whole thing. They just said a school, a member of our school community. We made the decision to make sure that we notified and named whether it was a staff member or a child, and then what building they came in. So I think we've been doing pretty good with that. I'll look and see if we missed one, Kristin, but I'm not sure about that.
Okay, and we'll get back to you. I'll follow up, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. I appreciate that. We don't ordinarily answer, but since it was something that was kind of pertinent, and certainly given the news today that vaccinated people may not be required to, or will not be required to wear masks, although that lends a lot of I'm really hoping that was a mask, Leo. But, you know, obviously, until, until we get the majority of our kids, you know, to have the vaccine available to them, until Desi says anything different, we'll continue to wear masks. So. All right. Let's see, do I have other people who would like to? I'm sorry, Leo, would you like to run public comment?
You go right ahead.
Right in. Do I have anybody else who is raising their hand? I don't actually have the participant list here with me.
I don't see the hands.
No hands, I see. Oh, there we go. Okay. Well, then I am going to say that public input at this point is closed. Thank you for your comment.
We voted the minutes.
You already voted the minutes? What?
Went on a border. Yeah, we're on new business.
Gracious. Okay, so new business. We have school committee meeting dates. So I am going to, just to let you guys know, I'm going to distribute to you and then include it in the packet, the Agenda objective calendar. I'd like to kind of put just together, we usually have kind of a a general idea of what we're going to do over the year and when. I'm trying to make it a little bit more detailed for next year, but I do need your input into it, because there are some things I'd like to talk about in terms of timing and in terms of what we discuss when, for instance, our policy says that we're supposed to be determining, you know, how we have roles assigned to us at, right after the election. However, we have traditionally done it in September. Do we want to be kind of looking at how we change our roles at what time? When we want to do Dr. Morrison's summative evaluation for the last two years? And then how do we align that with teacher goals? I'd like to, now that, and we'll discuss this later in the meeting, I'd like to start turning through the MASC policy, which is now back in our hands for evaluation by us. And other kinds of areas like that. So I will send that out to you, and I'll include it in the packet. I think I intended to send it, but then I had to do a quick change on a couple of things. But that also brings me to, and I, the idea of what we want to work on this summer in terms of our summer workshops. I think we we had initially discussed that June 17th could be a regular business meeting or could be a workshop. Perhaps, and it could be a time in which we could really kind of set a timeline around what we want to do for for our kind of summer R and D for ourselves and professional development. Dr. Morrison and I were talking about perhaps we'd like to do one short workshop that might get us through a couple of items on our agenda, and then actually have a day of retreat in which we were able to really kind of chunk out working on the policy recommendations and changes that the MASC have put together, and then some executive sessions that we probably will need to do in preparation for the year, and also that this is a year that we're going into strategic planning. So being able to kind of formulate our thoughts together as a group, but in a less formal atmosphere in person, because I would also like to see all of you in person at some point in August would be great. So I know that we're trying to find some dates that are available for space that we could do that. But if there are times that you have vacations already planned or anything like that, please let me know. Big chunks of the week, we'd like to do it, you know, within August and certainly before our first meeting, our first official meeting. So how does that sound? Anybody have any feelings about, you know, a day of, you know, kind of intensive housekeeping and planning for the year going forward about what we want to commit, do and our goals as a committee? Are we okay with that?
I think that's a great idea. I think, you know, plant some seeds in June.
Right.
Take some time to rest, reset, and recharge.
Right, and I'm still very committed to not seeing any of you in July. Love you a lot, but I just, we need a break. Actually, Andrea counted, and you'll see in that list of meetings that we've done in the last, since last July, it's 39. I undercounted by one. So given that we've had 39 meetings in 11 months, I think we can take a little bit of a break if the world allows. So I'll try to keep that boundary in place for us. So please get me your calendar in terms of that. However, I would tonight like to look at and vote in our school committee calendar for regular meeting dates for next year, which kind of essentially go back to our regular schedule of, you know, one to two meetings a month. We will, depending on when the when the special town meeting happens, either in late September, early October, we'll obviously have to put another one in for that. But we'll have to vote that in when we have an actual date on that. But are there any dates here that look as though they would not be possible, or do you think we can generally vote on this tonight, to vote this calendar in?
Does the, that second meeting in January, is that the public hearing on the budget?
Yes, that will be the public hearing on the budget, and we're actually this year going to make sure that we communicate with. Last year, we said it a week earlier, thinking that we'd like to give ourselves a little bit more time with the warrant committee, but it always seems like we just need to do it at the end of January. And Representative Garlick has been very amenable to scheduling at the week, scheduling her kind of state of the town or state of the district meeting before that, and we'd really like to invite her, or at least I would like to invite her to our budget meeting next year. So I, yeah, I'd like to put that in as that date and then make sure that her office is good with scheduling the kind of town meeting the week before that.
I'm, I'm good with it. I just want to put in a formal complaint that I do not want to spend my birthday at this evening, but I of the school committee.
We have.
Wow.
Just no day.
No, listen, I hear you. In fact, oh, look, it's not my birthday this year. But if, if you would like us to bring you a cupcake, I'm not going to vote that in, but I will take preferences.
If I'm extra grouchy, that's why.
Oh, can't wait.
You know, I'm not getting younger. These are birthdays that are making me older, and I got to be there, so.
If I could do it on a different day, Megan, I would, but.
I know.
All right, so.
It was bound to happen.
Aside from the birthday complaint, in which I will not ask you which one it is, just depress me more than it would.
I'm sure it's not a big one.
30 is a big one. All right, so let's straighten ourselves out here. So aside from that registered formal complaint about ticking off the years, is there any other issue or that we can identify? Obviously, it's malleable, we can always revote it, but. So do I hear a motion to, and also just to make sure that we will continue to stay at the 6:30 executive session, and then the 7:00 PM regular meeting, instead of bumping it back to 7:30 as we had previously, I think.
Thank you, Jess, for remembering. Last two years, we've always conflicted with Denise Garlick, so I'm glad you thought of that, and.
We actually did think of it this year, but then the budget season, just, it seemed like it just was too hard to kind of get it done by that point, so.
Anyways, well done.
Make sure. Thank you. So do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved, Anna May.
All right, Anna May, and do I hear a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Leo. And I'm going to take a roll call vote. Anna May O'Shea-Brook.
Here, or yes.
Leo Brem.
Yes.
All right, Megan Glenn.
Yes.
And Jessica Riley, yes. Roll call vote. The motion has passed unanimously, and this will be our school committee meeting dates on Thursdays, as they have been for the last couple of years.
I'm just reviewing the meetings from this year, and we're way behind in our new schedule.
I know, I know. I understand. Perhaps we can add an additional 29, but if we can't, no, it would actually be an additional.
On your birthday.
I don't have them anymore. I canceled them.
For lack of interest? Yeah. All right. The other, and next thing is, which is, we're not quite done with this, is I want to talk about returning to in-person meetings and the kind of date and logistics around that. I don't. I think that we should definitely begin by the next, by the, by whatever August workshops we do, or, and certainly by August 26th, or whatever, just voted here. I guess we could decide whether we wanted to do an in-person meeting for the June 17th meeting. I've been avoiding doing it simply because I don't want to have to rearrange the library for the amount of social distancing that we would have to do in the tables and everything else, and seems kind of a burden, given that the space is so kind of you know, set at this point. But so once we do go back to in-person meetings, I'd like to make sure that it is streamed on Medfield TV live, and that that's consistent. But I think that we probably will stop zooming or doing the hybrid. I think that if we go back, we go back, and if people want to make comments about things that are on the agenda, they should come in and we should go back to the time that is the time. I mean, I suspect at that point, the executive order might be over anyway. We should probably plan for that. But I do want to make sure that people continue to be able to have the access of being able to see our meetings live and in the moment, because previous to this, they've been taped.
So Jess, you're saying that the same access that the board selectmen have, so.
Correct.
You have in-person, people in person, plus they stream it live on YouTube?
Yeah, in traditional times. Right now, I think the board of selectmen are doing hybrid.
Right.
Which is, you know, they're accepting comment through Zoom, but they're in person. I, but I suspect that by the time we hit the summer, we'll be out of that portion of the emergency thing. You know, obviously, if the emergency order continues, we can make, you know, we can make accommodations for for receiving public input if you're unable to come in because of a concern around the virus. But I think that we are probably at the point where we have the space and the ability to bring people back in.
I think it's not as consistent with that, you know, with other agencies in town. I mean, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Yeah, well, I mean, the thing is that the selectmen will always have a little bit of a problem. Their spice, their space is so small.
Right.
But again, you know, once the emergency order ends, there may be some difference in how open meetings go at a certain point, but the open meeting, the Division of Open Government sent out a notice, I think it was just a couple of days ago, saying that, you know, public participation is, you know, in terms of comment, it is email. It is, as long as you're able to observe, it doesn't simply have to be people speaking. You know, that there is a kind of a a wide range of definition, and I think as long as we're continuing to be open and very happy to have people kind of.
I haven't seen anything, but has MASC made a statement about that?
About.
Sorry?
I haven't seen anything from them at all.
Yeah, no, I haven't either. I'm just curious to see, you know, what school committees are doing across the state. Are they doing hybrid?
Most, um.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, so I do. I was actually talking about this last night with kind of the roundtable of kind of the different school committees around here, kind of like, and they, first of all, they were kind of amazed by our public input policy, because they, they don't have that. I mean, you get to do like, kind of being brought over for comments like once or twice during the meeting. You don't get to do it after every agenda item. Ours is an unusual policy in that way. And I know that Medway has required that you be in the room if you want to make a statement that most districts at this point, unless they're quite large or simply do not have the ability to kind of accommodate for a certain number of people. Or that they ask you, you can't ask anyone to register beforehand to publicly speak, but you can always, you know, to be able to kind of get numbers in and make sure that you're not overpopulating an area, but you you can limit the number of people who could be in a room, right, at this point with the executive order that's the emergency order. But most school committees are not taking comment by Zoom at this point. Like, I think, I think Lexington is, Medway is not. I don't think Holliston is taking it by Zoom at this point.
So we can assess as things change and.
Yeah, but just as a kind of the logistics that we need to look at as we're thinking about, and I think it's, I think it's important to really be, like, I want to make sure that people continue to have the access and the understanding and the immediate access to the school committee meeting, so that they can kind of really understand what's going on. And that, you know, we have started sending out the agenda, you know, one or two days beforehand to the entire district, that we've been trying to kind of pump up the ability for people to understand what's happening beforehand. And I think that those are really great kind of movements forward. But I also think it's important to kind of go back to the ability for people to be able to speak in person three dimensionally and really understand how really begin to practice our kind of communication skills, again, and our ability to kind of function as a community. And, and to really see the people that we, that we represent. So. But I also think it's important to continue live streaming. So do you have thoughts about that in terms of just kind of hanging, hanging with it at this point, having like kind of our regular meeting that we've been doing up to this point on June 17?
Yeah, I thought what I would really hate to see is just go back to where, you know, pre-COVID, where one or two people will show up, you know, and look at the attendees list now. We've got 25. That's great, you know, this is.
Yeah, although that has plummeted considerably since the. I think 25 is great. And, but those 25 people could then live, watch it live, right, on Medfield TV and on the cable channel. So right now, they're watching it live because it's on Zoom. They could. So it's really kind of like, it's a transmission thing, not so much a, you know.
This is a good workshop discussion.
I mean, I watch the board of selectmen on YouTube all the time, you know. Live on Tuesday nights, and, you know, the link comes out on Twitter from the town, and then you click on that link, and then I sit with my iPhone and watch the meeting. So I see the same thing happening with our meetings, you know, it would be still, you can still see it in real time, live stream.
Yeah, I think that the disconnect previously has been that quite frequently, it would be just, it was never livestreamed previous to this.
Right.
It was just taped, and then, and then you had a lag about when it actually kind of got uploaded to Medfield TV.
How would that roll? So right now, the slides are, I think, well, I don't think all of them.
The technology to be able to livestream, but, but it seems to me.
We do too. Yeah, I guess my question is, is we can just do it on YouTube, like we have been doing it, but do we all want to have a device in front of us so that?
Well, that's, that's the problem, is that the device in front of us has led to real kind of audio issues and squeaking and screaming.
Probably something we should work out with Brett, right?
Yeah.
Hit in the air and let's see what he thinks.
Yeah.
He's got the capability.
Yeah, definitely.
Well, yeah, it's not our job to work out the technicality part of it. We know that, you know, we can apparently send people to Mars at some point, so we could probably work out live streaming to the, you know, population of Medfield. But I just wanted to kind of philosophically ask, you know, do we think it's time within the parameters of safety and everything else that we're willing to consider going back to kind of public meetings in the way that other boards will? And hopefully, but with increased access in terms of the immediacy of watching. We're willing to consider that? Okay. So let's work out the logistics at a different time, but I did want to put that out there, that I feel like it's, it's probably pretty important for us to be starting to think about, you know, coming out of our caves. Although I did finally get my office back tonight. So, I mean, I could probably stay here forever now, but, okay. All right. I'm actually going to ask, do we have, do we have public comment for this particular portion of the discussion? I'm watching. I am watching. I'm going to give about another 15 seconds. And no, okay. Moving on, Dr. Morrison, do you have other items since posting?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, then we will move on to old business. We initially thought that Dr. Worthley would be able to come and do an SEL update. But unfortunately, because we had to move this meeting to this week, he is unable to make it. He has, Dr. Worthley is not only our RISE director, but he is also our varsity baseball coach, and they have a meeting tonight. So we will push that off and postpone that agenda item to next week. And I informed you guys of that previously, so my apologies if you are here specifically for the SEL update, but it was, it was going to be a pretty kind of overall update. So now we want to go on to the new elementary school project, and I'm going to ask Dr. Morrison, Anna May, and Leo to kind of just give us a general update on where we are. And then I thought that it might be helpful in terms of the conversations in town for us to kind of reflect on our own kind of personal decision-making when we came to a unanimous vote in August to support the educational plan as part of the PSR submission. Because I think that there are, you know, there were issues of grade configuration at that point. You know, there were issues of grade configuration at that point, but there were also. Real thoughts around. How the educational plan impacted where we would put this building. So, Dr. Marsden, if you want to. Go ahead and kind of give us any kind of update or.
Sure.
Please, I open it up.
So we had our building committee meeting last night and just a couple of things I'd like to highlight. One is the. We've been working with architects in the firm to design what the classrooms look like. So we brought teachers in. And they met with Steve and Michael and took a look at, you know, some of the configurations of the classrooms and how the cubbies would be, whether to be inside the classroom. Or outside the classroom. We did a site visit to the Hildreth School in in Harvard a few weeks ago to kind of see how they did theirs, and that's an Arrow Street building as well. And we were really strong proponents of having the cubbies right outside because it created a. A project based learning area for every classroom, which we obviously are huge favor of. But what we needed to do was talk to MSBA about. Whether or not that would be something that they would support because they have certain recommend, they have certain requirements around classroom size, like for instance. Elementary classrooms need to be nine hundred square feet. The actual envelope of the classroom needs to be nine hundred square feet, and when we did. The the project based learning in the cubbies outside, it dropped the classroom size a little bit below that, but we. Included the project based learning stuff that's right outside the door as the classroom size, and we're just trying to get approval from MSBA on that. So if we don't get approval for that, then we'd have to move the cubbies inside, but we still have that project based learning outside. It's going to look a little different. So we really committed to that. That was part of our educational plan, and we think it's a really good thing for our our teachers and our kids. So that's been, you know, a lot of the work we've been looking at, and we're starting to discuss now what types of. Materials that will be used in the project. So will we using for floor materials, ceiling materials, wall materials, and those will differ depending depending on what space they're in. So that's been something we've been really looking at in the last few weeks, which has been exciting. And I know last night at the, it should be posted in the website soon, but the Arrow Street went through some more renditions of what. Classroom will look like, a really great rendition, I think, of looking south. On the Wheelock campus, so you can actually see. What the Wheelock School in the forefront and the new school behind it. And how there's still a ton of open space there. They put the new lacrosse soccer field that's going to be part of the project there too. It's a really, really great picture. Actually, we posted on our website today. If you go to the designs, that's the lead photo on the on the designs and the dropdown. So that's. Something that was, again, you get really excited about when you start to see it all come together and the way it's going to look is really going to be great for our kids. So that was one. The other piece that I want to touch upon is it was a change that came out just this week on the well protection. There it is. There's the picture. Awesome. Yeah, that's it.
Love that photo.
I mean, I think, I think so. What they did is that's the an actual photo of the area. And then they superimpose what the new school would look like behind. So you see Wheelock in the forefront and you see that that a part of this project is also. Real, re redoing the parking lot in the front of Wheelock so that it's it's much more parent and student friendly. And adding additional parking there because now parking is a real problem. You'll see that all the trees in the front, those mature trees are all going to stay. You'll see all the mature trees in the back, and then we're going to be adding a lot more trees than we than we take down. Again, the trees we take down are probably like brush, you know, seven or eight feet brush there. The tree warden went out with the architects and was actually pleased that we were getting rid of some of the trees that were damaged in the last. In the storms the last couple of years. So you get to see. How this looks and how, I mean, look at the open space that's there. You can see that that is just a a great place for a school. It maintains all that open space that we love in Medfield. It maintains those soccer fields. It adds, if you look to the in the school right behind it, the darker green, that's the new lacrosse slash soccer field that's going to be in there. That replaces the field where the the actual school was being built. So you see the nice synergy between the two buildings. We we share buses, so it'll be really easy for kids to get off and go either to the new school or to Wheelock. We'll be able to share staff in that. Kids with that, Wheelock will have opportunities to use some of the newer facilities, whether it be the stage, the. The gymnasium or the walking path that's going to be built outside. So all those kinds of things are just really good. You know, again, reason number three thousand why that's the great place to to build a school, and I think this really captures it well. So that was something that. Arrow Street shared with us last night. The other piece was.
Actually, Dr. Marsden, I just want to quickly point out that if if you look at the the picture here, a lot of people have asked about. Map or after school programming and how how map might be incorporated. And there's been information out there like, well, the map will be gone and no, the map building is still there. And in fact, if you look at this. The the map building that is there right now is is literally passed into and in a much safer way than crossing that kind of parking lot back there. With both Wheelock and. And the new elementary school project. So. And I know that we've talked about how we continue to share space. With map because that's something we already do. You know, the Dale Street kids are in. From the FAF and they walk over to the Dale Street Gym and. Right now, kids who are at Wheelock use the Wheelock Gym and Wheelock classrooms, and I can't, I my assumption is that we would probably. Knowing how important after school care is for elementary school kids. You know, we would probably be working out arrangements as long as to have map or whatever after school program would choose to be there. I mean, I'm assuming it's map. Also sharing some of those facilities. I mean, that's something that that has been important.
Yeah, we've we've done that all along, and I think there's probably going to be. So even though we've taken the daycare space out of the the current. Design, partly because we might be, it's non reimbursable. And the town would have to kick in offer all of that, and we felt like. We might be able to use additional space somewhere else to still provide that service for our teachers. So that's that will save, you know. Half a million to a million dollars just in non reimbursable construction space. We thought that was a really important thing to do to remove that, to bring the cost down again. But as I was saying with the the well protection district. This week it came about that they they reevaluated what the well protection district is in that area, and I know that there's been. Lots of conversation around that in town about water supply and all this other stuff. Originally, it was thought that the existing Wheelock Building. Was that the well protection district went right through the center of the existing building. That is no longer the case. In fact, the the new well protection district. Actually doesn't even encompass the the new school, only the very corner of it. And and it didn't, as Mike Quinlan said last night, it wasn't really going to impact the design anyway. Because, you know, that that really wasn't a huge factor for us, but I just think it's important to get out there that anything that you hear going forward about. This new school and the well protection, it's just not true. It's been reevaluated and revised. That is also going up on the website that Arrow Street put the new drawings together that shows the actual. Well Protection District. There was someone that purchased some land on Elm Street in the last year or so. That wanted that reevaluated to make sure, you know, he had some, I think, some ideas of of additional building over there. And when they reevaluated that, we were informed by the town that the. The thought before of the well protection district going directly through existing Wheelock is no longer the case. So. That was that was positive as well, and I think it's important that everyone knows that that is no longer the case. Going forward, that it isn't there. So that that's kind of what I, thank you for putting that up. That that should.
There'll be a second to get it up there, right? So the green line.
If you see the green line, that that's the, that's now the the well protection district zone. Prior to. This reevaluation, it was right smack through the middle of the Wheelock School. So you'll see where the new project is. Just that southern tip there is touching the well protection zone. It is no longer all in the well protection zone as it has been reported for for weeks now. So. That's another positive of why we need to have it over there. That's the best one I had. Anna May and Leo, please add whatever you.
Yeah, I guess just about the about the change too. I said the person that purchased that property, you know, was was up here where this word Wheelock is, that's where the land was purchased and. Evidently, there's certain guidelines involved with the number of feet or yards and evidently it was seven hundred or five hundred feet over what it was supposed to be, I guess. In those protection areas. So and I guess that's what was the reason for the adjustment. So that was a surprise, obviously, that we didn't realize. And so that is one of the reasons for that change as well. And the, does anybody have any questions about the pictures? I did, I did post these up and share some yesterday. And I had some questions, you know. As Jeff mentioned, those those are all the original trees, and I was there today for soccer practice. You know, and it's definitely going to clean up because right here, where you see that road going in is kind of where the. The entrance to the back of the parking area is and it's all.
Oh, yeah, I didn't recognize it without the porta potties knocked over.
Yeah. We did discuss porta potty placement for the new building. So and we will have to find a new place to put the storage shed for the soccer soccer equipment, so.
There's only so much I can worry about. You guys take that one.
So, no, it's a very exciting project, as you can see.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, Leo. There's just a couple of things I wanted to add. So last night I thought was a great meeting. Again. Every meeting, there's more and more revealed, so it is becoming more real.
Real, yeah.
Just really exciting and, you know, Electric Time Company, they're donating a clock like they donated. Every building this, you know, this business is very generous. Tom Herbs and his wife both serve as volunteers on a ton of committees. So these are people who are just so good to Medfield, you know, with time and talent, et cetera. And so they're using those elements as themes as well as music, so it's really cool. So I'm I'm really psyched and so these buildings will be. You know, reflective of our community as well and not just walls and floors, et cetera. But I wanted to say that in conjunction with tonight, I know there are a lot of competing things, but tonight we had or we are having as we speak, you know, a community conversation. With some members of the school building committee tonight, so hopefully people are attending and getting just some recap information and also an opportunity. To ask questions to some of the members. But really, we want people to go to the annual town meeting on on Monday and so we've.
Bring up the weather.
Anyways, wear layers, wear layers, but I encourage folks here to sign up on our brand spanking new website. Which looks beautiful, which you can access through medfield.net, explore the new elementary school. There's a new site. If you don't get our weekly emails, you. Can sign up for it and, you know, with all the updates, et cetera, there's a new fact sheet out. We just want people to come again to annual town meeting with an open mind to hear the discussions and then to make an informed decision.
And I almost always give a plug for annual town meeting anyway, because it really is the legislative body of our town, and it is astounding. That this form of government continues to exist. In the US after all of this time. The fact that there is still, there are still communities, not many, but communities that do. Literally representative or, you know, like individually represented town meeting is amazing to me, and the fact that we. Continue to be small enough and hopefully. Community minded enough to to really make that effective. But, you know, you gotta. You gotta play to win and people who are not. Who who feel like things are going just great. Don't go to town meeting and sometimes you lose your voice if you think. That other people will shout for you. Because sometimes people shout something that you don't agree with. So bundle up. Find your sitter. And come not just for the schools, but for all of the other things that we have to vote on. Every year, you know, it's necessary. And. Yeah, and I will personally thank you, no matter how you vote or what you do. So then I guess I would like to see if we could kind of. Leave into a little bit of a discussion around. Why each of us kind of supported the educational plan, because obviously we, I personally, and I suspect all of us have been thinking about that. A great deal. Because there has been this kind of push to. And I just basically start from the beginning and kind of disregard. Most of what has been done so far and kind of go back. And I think one of the reasons that this alarms me the most is not even. You know, where it would. Like even the fact that the decision itself is being. Questioned after. Years of work and professional guidance and professional volunteer hours, which I mean. We are so lucky to have the people who who truly work in this industry and are able to negotiate. Our way as a town through these. You know, through these projects. I mean, it's just kind of astounding to me that we have.
Can I just comment on that?
Yeah.
You you've you've hit a point, you know, I've had the opportunity to work on numerous building products throughout my career. Probably about twelve or so and about half of them are in MSBA. And so you have to work with towns, the towns like in Sharon and Newton to the very involved groups. But I'll tell you, neither neither of those towns have the talent on the on their building committee that we have. As I've practiced, some of you know, I'm working a bit in Walpole right now. The administrative team there, and we have a middle school project underway to renovate. Combine the two middle schools in Walpole. And Tim Bonfari is, he's had, he's the OPM on that particular job, actually. So. Seeing him work in those other areas, you know, through another another lens, because I had, I've had to work with him on on that project. You just see that we are really lucky to have them, that expertise working for us for free. It's like having another, you know, clerk of the works or, you know, really trained set of eyes on this process. I.
And we have three or four of them, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Industry on this, on this committee.
On that committee, exactly.
So all the bios are on that new website, where if you go to the website, the bios are there, and as Leo said. Just incredible caliber of individuals, Walt Kincaid, you know, Mike Weber, Tom, or you know, the list goes on and so we are.
It's definitely streamline that conversation, Anna May. You've been in there and Jeff, like you've heard the conversations when we're talking about. You know, things about cost savings and other things, they're already three steps ahead where in other districts that may have to be explained. Or, you know, people have really big ideas on how to get things, but the having that expertise there allows us to focus on the really important things that we're looking for out of this building. Like, for instance, there's been a lot of conversation around the size of the gymnasium. And what's important for, you know, the gymnasium and the ability to have rental income after a building is complete. And what that's going to take to do that and what you don't need to bother with. And just that conversation alone, they were so, they were so skilled in the way they were going to position the courts in the space to maximize. Not only our ability to use it, but the community to use it as well and for that rental space. It's so, and that conversation could have taken. Other towns, two or three meetings, right? And because they were able to explain it well, understand it, explain it to even me. It made perfect sense that, you know, and how we're doing it. And that was just an example of that expertise. And what that expertise does, you know, for us as a community, so.
Yeah, to that point, Leo, in that conversation, you know, if you have a a gym with a certain space, then you have to have X amount of sinks, X amount of bathrooms that are attached to that. So we were able to to get it smaller so that we didn't have to add the extra sinks and extra bathroom, although cost savings. That they know because they do this every day of their life. It's really helpful and they're doing it for free as a volunteer for the town of Medfield. So I can't thank, you know, Mike and Tim and all the other volunteers on that committee enough for the work that they're doing to help us.
No, and even.
And I think that really, I'm sorry, go ahead, Anna May.
No, sorry, even in terms of of the spacing, because I I do believe that people in town, myself included, you know, when the public safety building went up, we were like. What just happened? You know, this is you. People are just a bit more, you know, just a bit more cautious and and I respect that. But also, I I listened to Tim Bonfati speak at the warrant committee, you know, when he he and Mike Quinlan were answering questions. About why we ended up picking Wheelock, et cetera. But Tim, it's, you know, even Tim's experience of viewing Dale, because always I thought, gosh, that's an awfully big school to be. Across the street from those, you know, ranch homes and stuff, but then when you put it into context of, you know, this new building is going to be what, ninety eight thousand square feet or so? The current Dale Street is sixty thousand square feet. And if you're plugging that in in between Memorial and Dale, he said, this is going to be like a school. In Cambridge, you know, that kind of density. And then when you look at that photo that Leo showed earlier with, you know, with that field. Over at Wheelock, it's just, it's meant to be beyond sharing resources beyond, you know, we have a lot of shared teachers in town, you know, that it just makes sense. So and but to view it in that way because of Tim Bonfati's expertise. You know, just made me view it a little differently.
Yeah, talking about that that campus thing too, it is a beautiful campus and the way they incorporated in that picture, you see how they incorporate the two buildings together. You know, and you know, around our educational plan, you know, two years ago, I was having conversations with Dr. Morrison, I said. You know, Jeff and I don't know if you recall this, but I was trying to figure out how to have a constant person follow. You know, I think I said a guidance counselor for every grade, right? Something along those ideas, right? How to have this consistent people to know your grade, to know the grade and be the advocate for the entire grade to know the, you know, the students. Because somebody asked me recently on this idea of the on the campus and. Why would the grades work with each other? And I said, it's about the staff being able to be with the students, right? So they get spend two years at Memorial and all the staff get to know your child so well and help them learn in certain ways. And then they kind of have to start over when they go to that next school. But when and when the grades are compact and next to each other, that staff can follow the students along the way, right? And then on the same campus, it's not that burden where we have to pay staff to drive from school to school or we, or that's just not feasible, you know, cost wise, it's. To have that. So this idea of the of the campus and having that consecutive grades on the same campus is going to be so powerful for the learning environment. By far, it just takes away that learning curve. That has to happen with our students today, so.
I think that that's the the part of this whole conversation that has truly haunted me through. Through all of these kinds of iterations of Dale and Wheelock and Wheelock and Dale and it's a little bit like. I think it's the musical Brigadoon where they like have a fight about, you know, like or Seven Brides for Seven Brothers, something like where they're they're like Dale, Wheelock, Dale, Wheelock. But honestly, what we should all be shouting is, how do we? Kids, right? We should just be shouting kids. And I hear a lot of arguments about, well, you know, like we want to keep the downtown active or we want to. You know, preserve that experience of fourth and fifth graders being able to walk to town on those half days. You know, for those two years. Or and it's a rite of passage and it's a rite of passage I went through and. But really. We're not thinking about kids if we're thinking that Dale Street is the. The single best place. Right? We'll have a school at Dale Street, right? Like if maybe in 10 years without MSBA money. If we decide to kind of go back, but so one. That's where you are sacrificing multiple generations of kids who could go through Dale Street. Two, if we have a unified campus, and this is what I have. Always considered, if we have a unified campus and I'm quite frankly disappointed, it won't be. One through five, that is a concession we have made to this hideous circumstance that we have found ourselves in. But I would be screaming a lot louder and I would not have voted for this project. If we hadn't. Determined that Wheelock was the best place to do that. I would be having a much, much more intense conversation and not be as amenable. To Wheelock campus or to a two grade campus. If I didn't know that. That. Two, three, four and five could all share the resources of a relative of a new building. Have that much more exposure over four years, have that much more of an ability. To be able to transition. In a much easier way. And that. We're talking about these like kind of micro issues, right? We're talking about, oh, I'll miss the tradition, I'll miss this, I'll miss that. But by the opportunity of being able to have the Dale Street School. Turn into, as is being discussed right now, with a much lower renovation cost. Turn into a parks and rec facility. In which our teens. And our middle schoolers and our families. Can have enough space to be able to have a walkable, accessible. Parks and Rec program in the middle of our town. And I and I think about and I think what's wrong with us? What is wrong with us that we would have enormous building in the middle of a field? We're still going to keep the Dale Street because it's going to be parks and rec and we are going to have earned a city block full of dense. Two, it's two story buildings. With horrible traffic flow. Why would we do that? That's not child thought forward. And that is why I have been so intent on this. All the way through. It doesn't make sense. Not only I'm not thinking about the the fourth and fifth graders exclusively. I'm thinking about every single kid who comes through this town. And this decision will affect every grade. And one of the things that Dale Street. In a conversation I had with Mike Quinlan this summer when I was wrestling with the three, four, five issue. And I was mad. I was really like, it was such a disappointment. And one of the things he said is. You know, the unfortunate thing is it is hard to pass an elementary school. Because the people who will use an elementary school. You know, they'll they'll vote for it, but by the time their kids go through it. That, you know, elementary schools take a long time to build and their kids may never experience that. Right? And then the people in town. They feel like, why would I pay for a school? It's it's only for a couple of grades and. But a Wheelock campus frees up so many opportunities for every single grade, every single age in our entire town. And to not be putting our kids and our population first based on our feelings of needing to be. Safe and the same. Seems to me to not be the kind of forward thinking educational town that puts our value on our kids and our community. It's it's reactive. And it's based on. On fear and and I don't want to insult anybody. I I have a lot of decisions I probably make on fear as well. But if you're able to open. Up your. Your mind to the idea that a little difference could make a huge difference. And that that has always been the impact of the educational plan for me is that we are opening. Up. We are shifting things in a way that has been stuck in the cogs for a long time.
Yeah, I'm really excited about the Dale Street usability. I mean, it's it's going to give us all kinds of flexibility in the future. There's. Not only parks and rec, the food cupboard, I heard they were going to build their own place at one point. They were looking to fund that.
They were looking for a space. I think they put it on hold.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, so there's that opportunity. This other child programs that could leverage the space for rental and other areas as well. And and as some people know that I do a lot of work with collaboratives in the state of Massachusetts as well. And one of the things that collaboratives do very well is they take over. And put a little money in and pay rent into former educational spaces and so.
We used to actually have a collaborative at at Memorial, but we've run out of space. I mean.
Right.
Sometimes we joke about this and we're like, hashtag, we're going to need a bigger boat. We're going to need a bigger boat.
Yeah.
There are people coming to town.
Those spaces are very valuable to the collaboratives because and it keeps the programs in here. They pay us rent and they help maintain the buildings. And I'll give you, for instance, Cape Cod Collaborative, one of my folks I work with, were taking over the old Bridgewater State College campus in Yarmouth this summer. Because they're closing that campus, which was an old elementary school. Have fire, has fireplaces in the kindergarten classrooms actually still. But they had renovated it and we're going to turn it into a full fledged program in that whole building as the collaborative and. And then tho- those generate income into the town and they and they provide educational programming and it doesn't have to be the whole building.
I knew it was Leo.
It's gonna be at least once. I mean, did you hear the piano lessons earlier?
Matter of fact, if I could just kind of frame, you know, the conversation around the education plan for folks that maybe weren't at that meeting, we talked about it or don't know what that means. As part of this project, we're required to develop an educational plan and that educational plan that the district develops. Really drives what the design is going to be with the architect. So we we actually submitted two, we submitted a three, four, five plan and a four, five plan because at that point. We hadn't made a decision on what what the grade configuration was going to be. I will say that at at the board meeting with MSBA. One board member did comment, and I know I said this at other meetings, I want to say it again. That the education plan developed for this elementary school. Should be the model for everyone building an elementary school going forward.
I was there, I heard it.
You know, that that is, you know, to me. The time and effort that we put in with that the teachers put in, that Steve Brenham put in, that we all put in together. To write that plan, develop that plan and then get support from our architects as well. It's a really good plan educationally for kids. It really and truly is. And I think that. The site selection was a, we've had a zillion conversations around that with with the SBC. And and we know that that campus setting, for all the reasons we've said at previous meetings, is really good for kids. I was a principal of a K to five elementary school. So. We didn't have all these transition issues that we have in Medfield. And it's just, it's the structure of our schools that create these, it's just create the transitions. As Leo said earlier, if you. You know, when I was a principal, by the time every kid was in second grade, you knew every kid's name, you knew every kid's family. And you had the next three years with those families, so you could support them and do whatever you needed with them because you had them for six years total. We don't have that luxury here because of our structure. So Houghington, Holliston, Medfield, we all have that same structure where. It's every couple of years you're moving on to a different school and those systems like all of us struggle with transitions. And it's it's important and having a, like, that's why we really wanted that one through five campus over at Wheelock. And again, we're not going to. Ask through all that, but. You know, having the two to five is really important too, because you have the kids go to that campus for four years. And there's less issues around transitions, which, you know, if you're not education, you might say, well, what's the big deal about that? It's a big deal.
It's a big deal.
It's a really big deal and there's and there's a significant population of our kids that struggle with those transitions and this would alleviate some of that. Also, it allows, as Leo said earlier about the collaboration with teachers, if we've learned one thing from the pandemic. Is that collaborative teacher collaboration is more important than ever. Much more important than ever. And our teachers have done a phenomenal job with that during the pandemic. This proximity and proximity is a big deal. This proximity is going to allow teachers to meet, talk about kids, have those conversations that they need to have when a kid is transitioning from Wheelock. To the new elementary school, they'll be able to have those meetings and conversations and support if there are any issues or there's support that that a child may need additional services. All those things are critical for elementary years and the proximity of this building and the establishment of this campus really makes that happen. And I I think that whole education plan that we wrote. That again, that was really well received by MSBA and now is coming to fruition because of the design that that Arrow Street is doing. They're basing the design, they're basing the conversation that we talked about earlier, the Cubbies and project based learning. All that is based on our education plan and what we see as the vision of the future for our kids. And we, that's why we feel so strongly about the Wheelock site and why it's important to build that school there.
Yeah. I feel very much.
I was gonna say, Dr. Morrison, one of the things that. I'm sorry.
That school that we've been building out of that 1,000 page education plan cannot be built anywhere but. The Wheelock site.
Correct, correct.
That's what is the bottom.
That's a great point.
Well, Jeff, I also, you know, that that plan was was combined with. Community members, I mean, I remember. Someone's daughter was actually in one of our sessions drawing on the plans about what she, a little girl wanted out of her elementary school. I remember that, you know, that in particular with that. And I think there's been, you know, a little misconception that. There weren't any meetings and there weren't any session of public sessions about any of this and. And we've had so many public meetings about it and and I guess that's the that's the part I. You know, I just want to remind people, if you go back and look, I want to believe it's north of 50 meetings, I think, over the process. And then a bunch of those were open forum type meetings as well.
And it was also, Arrow Street also had meetings with our teachers, numerous meetings with our teachers.
Yeah.
Meetings with them. They've also had meetings with our students to get input from kids. So I mean.
Well, that gentleman, the arc that, what was his name? The one that, you know, he helped design High Tech High.
Yes.
And. He's the educator. David. Yeah, the the programmer that came in and helped us, you know. Had an outsider come in and walk us through this path of, you know, the design thinking process of how, you know, what's the problems we're looking to solve and. How are we going to solve those problems? And I thought it was just a very intense process and. When people got to experience it, I mean, even though I sat next to Gus Murby, actually, one of them too. And it was interesting to hear his questions and comments about someone who's not in education. To, you know, about why, why things were being asked in the way they were, you know, why would you want that that way? Why is that important to learning today? You know, and it's and I think some of that communication is going to be. You know, once this project gets rolling, it's going to be fun to share with people too and how how this is actually going to really enhance. The instructional capabilities for those four grades, all four grades in that campus. Particularly the outdoor classroom spaces and the walking classrooms. I just love that concept. And after COVID, people are just going to be used to it now. I think more than ever. COVID has really pushed. The ability to break outside the box, right? And get outside of the building too and bringing the outside in. So I'm. Sorry, Megan, I could gush all night. You better shut me off, mute me.
I just wanted to jump in and and everybody has mentioned like all the things that I was was going to say, I mean, because we all. Are in, but I I just wanted to add that I remember in those early sessions. Talking about before we even could really visualize what this building might look like. Even talking about how we wanted it to feel and the importance of light and windows and. The spacing and entryway and and really even down to like the minutia of of design details. That really, at the end of the day, Dale is a 100 year old building that was built. As a high school in a different era. In a time. With a bomb shelter in a time when education involved. A teacher standing in front of passive individuals relaying information. For better or for worse, this is the state of education at that time. And no one's going to argue that. That we've moved past that and we are teaching our children and children are learning in different ways and and there comes our project based learning. And the collaborative spaces and the wings of grades and kind of the the school was built. As we started going through all this and and creating the educational plan. And something that isn't mentioned. Was the real interest in making this a sustainable net energy, net zero energy school and and pulling the kids into. That discovery of how to be better. Conscious citizens and environmentally friendly. And really using that surrounding nature that they have right there. I think of how fundamentally important it was for my kids to do the Victory Garden. At at Wheelock and and even Mrs. I got to have Mrs. Ravinsky's garden in first grade, you know, just using nature is so impactful for the kids. And any campus that allows us to kind of just like, like Leo said, the the walking nature trail, the just studying the the geothermal. I mean, I'd like to go study it because I don't really fully understand it, but it just, it makes such good use of the environment. And I mean, I could go on and on about all the transitions and I could even say that I thought long and hard about not moving to this town. Because of the fact that these. School buildings were islands like that. And I thought, you know what? Maybe it's just my issue and if my kids don't know any different. They'll just go through it and and it. You know, some of them were fine and others it was more difficult, but I can completely. Acknowledge that it has been tremendously difficult for some families. And I know that in the past placements from one school to another have. Kind of hold my mind when a teacher says, no, I didn't ever talk to, you know, the teacher before. They they work at a different school. I never see that person. Having them so close and collaborating would allow, you know, just very casual informal conversations like, hey, I have this, you know, boy you had last year, can you tell me about? The learning style or what's the deal with it? You know, just, it makes so much sense from just a programming standpoint. As well as, you know, the the staff sharing, I was a traveling teacher in my previous life and I had to get in my car and drive away. Not only was it taxing on me. But I really felt pulled in two different directions and as much as we want to think that we're all one Medfield. At this point, there is a very kind of islandy feel to the elementary schools that could be alleviated, I think, by having this campus. So. Those are the, I mean, just some of the reasons off the top of my head that educationally, I just think this is. A no brainer for me and and then I I am so excited to see the renderings, but again, I'm going to reiterate that this is a school that can only be. But again, I'm going to reiterate that this is a school that can only be built on that side and can only, can only work in that setting. And it would be a disservice to all of that work and all of those visions and all of that, you know, testimony from the experts if we had to scrap it all.
I mean, our job is always, and I think that we say this informally amongst ourselves all the time, it's kids first. It's just kids first. We are elected officials. We're elected officials by the town. And it's our obligation to make sure that we are using the resources of the town in the most responsible way possible. And I don't see a Dale Street site being the most responsible use of our resources, even if, which I don't believe, it would be less expensive. You know, over time, it's not going to be. And I think a unified campus and what we could do educationally with that and the ways that we could really manage our resources in far better ways across the town made this a decision that was, it was never hard to make a decision about whether I thought Wheelock was a good place or not and the, and the, for it or not. It was never hard for me. Nothing about that struck me as counterintuitive. And then to actually see the amount of work that went through this, the amount of work that the, that the building committee has done and the amount of time that they went back looking to see if there was any other possibility, any other place that we could put this. And giving each of those equal weight, I think, can't be underestimated either. But I think that's one of those things that people who are on the ground floor and have been paying attention and choosing to pay attention up to this point would, would know. But it's an, it's an enormous amount of information. I understand that the educational plan is over 1,000 pages. That's more about time, knowledge and expertise. And sometimes that's really hard to absorb. But sometimes I also think in a community, there has to be a level of trust. And, and I hope that we're able to kind of get there again. Would it be all right? I think it would probably be more than all right if I wrapped this particular part of the discussion up. But I did think it was important for us to, to just put it out there again, that these are not things that we've done lightly or that we're just ready to kind of check a box. You know, Anime and Leo and Dr. Marsden and Michael have spent literally days of their lives, you know, like 24-hour days of their lives, trying to get this project and figure out the best thing for our kids. And I do want to express my appreciation of that very much so. I don't know that any of us knew how big this would be. So, all right. With that said, do we have any public comment?
While you're waiting for a public comment, I just want to mention one other thing is the flexibility. These buildings are meant to last, you know, 50 years. So, you know.
Management of resources.
Yeah. And, you know, Wheelock will probably be on the docket in 20 years or so. And then we'll evaluate, you know, I think because if, if the town chooses to, to build this school and, you know, if we're in this place 20 years from now, I think they'll just have more choices.
Yeah.
You know, and they'll be in a better position that way. Whether they consolidate schools, whether they expand, you know, what have you anyways. So just thought.
I think that people don't realize that Wheelock and I were essentially born on the same day. In 1969, which reveals.
Hilarious.
Yes. So it, and I, I have to say, I think I might be aging just a little bit better, although this year, I'm not sure. You know, but in another 20 years, like, we're all going to be showing our age. And, you know, it's going to need some, it's solid now, but it's going to need some improvement as will Memorial. I mean, you know, buildings age. We, and it's about maintenance and about being able to have the flexibility. Okay. I do not.
The history of the Dale, though. Did you notice JFK spoke there?
Yep.
That was his job. Okay. So let's move on to the next agenda item, which is the budget 21 update. Michael?
Yes. So I, I wasn't at the last meeting, so I'm going to do the update for the month of April tonight. So for, I gave you the breakdown earlier today. The areas that we're still projecting over, we're still projecting over. If we look at the unit A, which is the teachers, and unit B, which is the paraprofessionals, which we have as instructional services. In a typical year, we would be about 67% of the budget would be expended at this point. And we're at 71%, but we knew that that was going to happen. We're still projecting what we projected for the last, since October, that we were going to go over in that line item. You know, the, the positive side on the personnel side is the student support and operations and administration are slightly below what the typical year expenditures are. So even with that being lower and the instructional services being higher, we're still going to be over, we're between 500,000 to 600,000, depending on the final numbers in the payroll side. So, you know, we had this conversation that, you know, Dr. Marsden made a decision that we should be freezing the budget. This was about probably January or February. And due to that freeze, that's helped us offset some of those costs. Not only have, by freezing the budget, have, has that helped offset those costs, but also the grants that we've received through the CARES Act and from the town and also that we received here on the school side. That's also helped offset some of these costs due to COVID relief. We are, again, like I said, we're projecting that we will be over, but we feel pretty confident at this point that we're going to be able to cover the, the overage throughout, from the operational budget by the areas that a few months ago, I think it was a couple of months ago, that we shared with the school committee where we're going to pull from to cover those costs.
Does anybody have any questions, thoughts? Anything they want to do? Or talk to Michael about, ask? I mean, think of, we're, we're kind of on track where we knew we were going to be. So. Anyone? No? Okay. And I'm going to, does anybody have any public comment around that? Or actually, why don't we hold a public comment till, just to get to this next agenda item, which is fiscal year 22, which is the one that we will be voting on in, on Monday as well. So is there any additional input around that right now? I know that you, Dr. Marsden, Michael and Megan were unable to get together to discuss kind of different iterations in the last couple of weeks for a number of different reasons. But is there anything else around that?
So I think we'll, we'll schedule another meeting for the three of us to get together and look at that. I mean, I think the important piece is that if we get, we get support on, on Monday night at town meeting, then that bottom line becomes our budget for next year. And then we can look within that budget to see if we want to make any changes in which, you know, we can bring that to the committee at the June 3 meeting.
Okay. Sound good to you, Megan and everybody else? You're, all right. All right. Well, then I believe we are coming down the home stretch. The M, the next, all right, I'm going to ask for public comment, just in case anyone is foaming to talk about the two budget items. Okay. The last thing that we want to talk about is the MASC policy manual project update, which is almost a saga, but not quite yet. It's a resolving saga. Megan, do you want to talk about the kind of meeting that you had?
Yeah, it's better.
In a brief.
Than we thought. Yes.
Yeah.
So Tim and I have taken over, obviously, policy from, from Jess, who started this whole process, what, two? Some years ago.
Yeah, we had a, yeah.
And after we met with Kathleen.
Our MASC rep, yeah.
We really found out. I'm going to just fast forward.
Fast forward. Yeah. It was not a productive meeting.
We're a lot better off than we thought we were. That's the bottom line. That we have sent over all of our manuals, all of our policy in.
Which we had done a year and a, almost a year and a half ago. Yeah.
A documentation. They have recoded and organized it into the, their current state that they house them in and re-tagged them and laid them out. And then they merged recommended policies with their model policies and made recommendations and have sent them back to us. So.
Which is kind of exactly where we're supposed to be at this point. We were afraid that somehow things had just gotten completely lost on the MASC.
No, they've been busy. They've been busy.
But they've been busy, just not communicating, not necessarily. But it was just.
There were less than nine emails from Glenn Kuchar. I'm not kidding, because the five was large. So I was like, what is happening? And so now it is in our court, so to speak. So Tim and I have kind of put out an, an email to Glenn to meet kind of officially. And he's going to show us, kind of walk us through what other schools have done in terms of, you know, revising or modeling their policies off, off of the MESEs and showing us kind of a example of a best practice that another district has used or something like that. So in the meantime, I think that this is where the workshop kind of comes in handy because there's a lot of policy to kind of wade through. So Tim and I will work on kind of divvying that up and then letting you, Jess, know as chair, which ones we want to bring up to you to kind of formally go through before we, and I don't, there's not a lot of them that we will have to really look into. A lot of them are, are fine the way that they are. And.
Of them, I think we'll probably do on some sort of consent vote where there's changes in language over time.
Yes. So I just got to flag the ones that are, that have a lot of changes or a lot of recommendations and, and go from there. But.
Make sure that we're giving them to Dr. Marsden, you know, ones that kind of deal with things around that might be within merit rules, kind of civil rights and, you know, student services kind of thing and making sure, kind of getting through.
We will be meeting with Glenn before the next meeting of June 3. So I don't know that I'll have a, a good update for you. But as I said, we're in good shape, much better than I originally thought when we got off the meeting with Kathleen.
Oh, yeah. No. When I, when, when, yeah. When I heard, when you communicated with me about what that meeting was like, I was like, what? And I think it's just pandemic disconnect. And, you know, we've had a couple of changes of, of personnel. And they've had changes of personnel and all of a sudden, you know, it was just kind of yeah, wrong place, wrong time, wrong project. But now we're back and we'll be able to make use of that in a way that people can find much easier and will be much more accessible and will be able to change a lot easier. So anyone have any thoughts or comments around that right now?
No, just thank you, Megan and Tim. I mean, that's a monumental project. So thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much. And, you know, obviously, all of us should be looking at the, the policies as well to kind of see within our own current policy manual, like what, what it is that we are, that we might flag as issues and concerns. You know, in fact, we could probably in, in our summer workshop, just kind of divvy up, you know, specific sections. You know, some of them are fairly well mandated. But others are, you know, a little more district dependent. So. And of course, Dr. Marsden will do that as well. And it will be a kind of a larger process. And it's actually probably a great thing to do just as we're going into strategic planning. You know, so that we can really align where our policies are with what we would, what we find to be the most important focus long-term for the district. So it's all, you know, in every, in every confusion, there is a little bit of a blessing, right? So does anyone have any comments on that? Either committee or all open it to the, to the floor? Okay. Then we are now officially on the total home stretch. Dr. Marsden, do you have informational items for us? And then I will ask the rest of the committee if they want to.
Sure. So in your packet, you have two more determinations from Desi on complaint, complaints that were filed by parents. One was in December. Actually, both were in December, one December 6, one December 8. So that's included.
Regarding, just remind us what they were regarding. Was it learning time?
Yeah, learning time. Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. So two of them, they're in your materials. They were closed out by Desi. Just like the, just like the other ones were. So I want to share that. The other piece is, I just really excited for our seniors, our senior prom tomorrow night. I know a lot of schools aren't doing it. I'm just so happy for our kids. And I know it's been a lot of hard work with the high school leadership team to get this done. So we're looking forward to having that Gillette tomorrow. Gillette has been very accommodating with us. And they've, they've really adapted to the regulations and our, our prom will be outside tomorrow. So cross your fingers for, for good weather. And we're happy, so happy for our kids. And then I just also want to remind you, I think you know, obviously, that our graduation weekend is really a great weekend for our kids this year. We usually space these things out, but now it's going to be a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, where Friday night, we'll be having the, the senior cruise, which we typically start the year off with. We're having that. The, the company has given us the boat just, just for us. It's not, we're not sharing it with anyone. So that's really exciting for our kids too. So we have that to ourselves. And then on Saturday, of course, the Roland Rally and the picnic party afterwards, which is, I know our parents are doing, you know, Kim Price and Janie Boylan doing a great job planning that. And then graduation on Sunday. So we have a really busy weekend that the 4th, 5th and 6th of June, but we're looking forward to it. And, you know, some of these, our seniors lost some, our, they were juniors last year, lost an awful lot. So we're just really happy that we can provide all this for them. So all good news there.
I have to say, I will be chaperoning the party, or one of the many chaperones, a party in the park on Saturday. And I can, I can say that I am pretty excited that it is at 1:00 PM as opposed to my usual all-night grad party shift at 1:00 AM, which was a little tough when we used to have the school committee meeting the very next night. Those were my zombie days. But I'm really excited. This is, you know, we're, it's just, it's so great that, that things have started to clear up in the way that they have. And we continue to hope that they do.
And I think this is an example of, you know, what we've done even last year where, you know, people canceled graduations right away. We just kind of stuck with it, stuck with it, stuck with it. And I think that's the same method we use this year too, is to stick with it and see, you know, what are the options and how we can provide it for our kids. So just really happy for the kids. It's going to be, you know, a good few days for them.
Yeah. Does anyone else have any informational items? Leo, did you look up the weather for me on Monday?
I don't want to look.
Yeah, it's actually not going to be. There's going to be showers in the morning, but it'll be fine. And it's going to be cool and cloudy in the afternoon.
Okay. Bring your blankets.
There's only 30% chance of precipitation.
Don't look at your cell phone. Look at the real weather. That's not the, that's not the real.
So the secret sauce here is, in case anybody out there doesn't know, and I think most of you probably do, is that the, the town and the schools do have access to a weather service that is kind of more microclimate because of things like.
Much so.
You know, DPW and things like that. Many municipalities do. Jeff is probably a really good person to ask.
I think we're good right, we're good right now. We'll have to see it, get closer, but we'll probably pinpoint that. I mean, they can pinpoint it right to the high school at that time. So they'll do that for us on Sunday. Yeah, they're pretty good.
Yeah.
Can you make it like rain right on top of me?
Keep it clear over the weekend, Jeff. I'm standing a deck. So we're going to make sure.
Could you wear your Eeyore hat at the same time, Megan? Okay. There are so many things and so many other things that I would probably love to say, but I'm going to not. Anime, anybody else?
Just, you know, annual town meeting. Come, open mind.
Open mind, heavy clothes, warm socks.
Layers, layers.
Layers, layers. All right. Okay. So.
And thank you to all the administration and the, the folks making it happen for our seniors. I'm so grateful. It means so much to the entire community. So just profoundly grateful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Much so. And all right. So the next thing is future agenda items will be a follow-up by Dr. Powers on student assessments across the district, kind of where we asked her to do kind of a roundup of that mid-year to kind of see. mid-year to kind of see where student learning was. And so we're going to, going to ask her to touch base on that again. And we also will be looking, uh, to honor our retirees for this year. I can't believe that it's June again. Huh?
I can. I can believe it's June. Yeah.
And end of year updates, uh, will either actually have, uh, PTO, MCP, ECPAC and the MMA either do kind of a written or live, it's up to them. It's the end of the year kind of, uh, reflection on what, what they've done this year. And so that we can also thank them, because there's been a lot of support there. And Anime, uh, will come back to us with her student feedback, uh, agenda item and we'll figure out from there if you want to. And we'll, uh, we'll do that, but not on June 3rd, just in the summer. However, our next meeting is Monday, May 17th at 4:30, uh, with a rain date for Monday, May 18th at 4:30 if necessary, just to discuss issues related to the fiscal year 22 budget before annual town meeting. But the next full bus, business meeting will be on June 3rd. And with that, I will ask if I hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Anime. Second?
Again.
All right, Megan, and I will do a roll call. Leo Brem?
Hi.
Megan Glenn?
Hi.
Anime O'Shea Brooke?
Hi.
Jessica Riley?
I.
And the meeting is adjourned with unanimous motion, uh, and it is adjourned at 8:34. Thank you so much. And we will see everyone hopefully.
Thanks, everyone.
Monday.
Thank you. Ciao.
Hey.